Mr. Eichberg, is he here? There he is. Take your seats, sir. My computer, which is on nuclear time, tells me seven one. Who cares about that? May I call to order in this pre-given meeting of the Leger Town Council, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark Sinan, would you please call the robe?
Mrs. Davis, here.
Mr. Goss, here.
Mr. Eichberg, here.
Mr. France, here.
Mr. Marshall, here.
Mr. Bratton, here.
Mr. Soms, here.
Mr. Sullivan, here.
Mrs. Reddick, here.
And I'm here, so, awesome.
We have a form. Are there residents or property owners who wish to address the council? Yes. Dr. Monahan, I'm sorry, I've been...
That's all right, Captain. At Monahan's 49 Homestead, I just wanted to speak to you a moment about the concern some of my neighbors and I continue to harbor about the condition of Leonard Hill Road. We very much appreciate it. Mr. Maslin and company put in some significant, albeit necessarily permanent repairs to that part of Leonard Hill Road that is across from Homestead. But the Leonard Hill Pond is still retained by a loose aggregate burn of the culvert system from Leonard Hill Pond down to Leonard Hill Road and across to Long Pond is still literally up in the air. Now, through the good offices of Representative Reynolds, we did get the 34 sheets of engineering drawings of the plans that exist for the reconstruction of that, actually putting in a dam there, putting in a bridge at Leonard Hill Road, raising the elevation of Leonard Hill Road some four feet. And I think I'm correct in saying that my neighbors in general were very much in favor of it. It is now two years to the month since that original burn blew out and the culvert system went up in the air and everything else transpired. And we understand that much of the support for the work that's projected will be funds from the Bureau of New Affairs coming through the Mashentucket Pequot Tribe. I would just encourage those of you in office in the town in dealing with the tribe to try to first of all find out what the status of that award is and therefore what the projected, and maybe Steve knows this already, but the projected date for the beginning of that work is. But we're coming up on the equinoxal storms and then they come in the fall, we'll have another equinox. And we really would feel more comfortable if we had a permanent system of containment for Leonard Hill Pond and a new hunk of Leonard Hill Road and a new bridge over the stream that runs between Leonard Hill and Long Pond. I thank you very much.
You will. Thank you. Anybody care to address Dr. Monahan? If not, maybe perhaps we'll hear about Leonard Hill Road in our later presentation. Any other property owners wishing to address the town? Okay, seeing none. We have committee commissions and board reports. Tonight, we have a report on pavement management principles and an update. And we have Steve Maslin here, the town's public works director.
Steve Maslin, 24 Maple Terrace. Good evening. I'm here to basically give you an update, as it were, and maybe advance our understanding of pavement management this evening. But before I do, let me give Mr. Monahan some good news and others. I've been in regular meetings with the Mashentuckets. And the funding is in place. The materials are being ordered. And it looks like the project will be completed through, during this construction season in various phases. So by the time we get to the end of this construction season, it should be complete. It's being accomplished entirely by the Mashentucket workforce as needed with any contractors that they might bring in. And the news only gets better on that front in terms of shared services. And I'll speak to that as we go through the pavement management presentation. But let me just introduce for you some individuals that are here this evening. From Seal Coating Incorporated, Dan Patnod and Fran Conroy and Tony Garo. You might have remembered him from the initial presentation from Beta Group of the pavement management system program and inspections and subsequent report. And so we're here just to kind of take this from where we were to where we're at and where we're going. And let me just move. I'm just going to introduce the couple concepts and then turn it over to Tony first and then Dan will speak and then I'll wrap up. But the key concepts of what we're at with pavement management is to go basically from a worst first to a proactive approach. And it could be defined in terms of pavement preservation as a planned system of treating pavements to maximize their useful life as cost-effective as possible. We're no longer in a day where you're just using traditional conventional approaches, which in some cases do involve surface treatments, i.e. chip seal. But there's a much broader range, much greater number of options to consider. And so we're going from a proactive approach, from a reactive approach with a heavy emphasis on preventive maintenance, staying ahead of where we're at and then wisely managing our annual budget to apply those funds where they're going to be most cost-effective. And one of the concepts you'll hear about tonight is equivalent annual costs. I'm not going to define that now. I think Dan will speak to that more and show you a chart of what that means. But that's an important tool in assigning particular types of treatment to the road system based on their condition. But as I introduced Tony, you remember him from 2010 is when we embarked on this. The mayor and the council went with this. It was an investment in the engineering side of things to come up with an approach that would be useful for us in managing our road system, which isn't as big as others that I've learned about tonight. But it is pretty substantial for the staff that we have. So it's been very helpful. It's been the basis of what we have done for our work so far and continue to plan. And the Beta Group program was adopted, was it last night? By the town council of Plymouth, Massachusetts as the official tool for their annual, for the basis of their annual road appropriations and budget. So it is gaining traction out there and it's been useful for us. And I'll let Tony kind of review some of those things with the program before we go on.
Thanks, Steve. Good to be back here. I think it was last year about the same time.
It could have been. We got through the report, yeah.
Yeah. All right. What I'll do is just a quick overview. It won't be as detailed as the presentation that I had completed last year. The system that we've developed for the town and for Steve to use as a tool is a Microsoft Access-based program. It's also connected with GIS, which allows you to map and analyze the roadway network systematically. Steve's been updating the system as roadway improvements have been completed. That information is then entered into the database, allowing for those roads to go, say, from a, if it was a 50, up to a 100 once that roadway improvement is completed. So the maintenance part is important. That's what Steve's been keeping up with, which is critical. This is just a snapshot from the system showing, like I mentioned, the GIS so we can make maps. There's some maps you're going to see later on in the presentation. And also a multitude of different types of reports, filters, sorting, queries, analysis that you can deduct in the program. And this then gives you a nice tool to maximize the funding that you have available. In developing the initial database, we started with the town's GIS information, which there was information available. We integrated that with the Connecticut DOT Center Line file, which has a lot of good information, like functional classification of roads, traffic volumes, and other information that we can use to help prioritize the roadway improvement projects that'll be, for example, presented tonight. There's also parcels and ortho photography that are also integrated with the program. What this slide is showing here is the total road miles that are included in the current program. You currently have 110 paved, accepted roadways within the town. That represents that big green area. It's about 70, almost 75% of the roadways. And then you have about 10% private and in the balance, about 18% is state. But the focus of the program is on the 110 road miles. Back in the summer, fall of 2010, we went out and inspected all the roadways within the town. You may have seen our vehicle. And we used a laptop to collect the information. Various distresses were catalogued in the database that you see out there today. For example, potholes, patching, alligator cracking, longitudinal cracking. And all of those different distresses are all identified in terms of their severity and extent. And ultimately, a rating is calculated, zero to 100, zero being worst, 100 being the best. And that's really the linchpin to the program. Once you have that information and you have these ratings in place, along with those other priority factors, now that allows you to now analyze your information. These are some examples of roadways. And what we've done here too, we've also added a grade level to those roads. Vintagill Road, for example, is an RSR 63, which is considered to be about in that C-D range. Christie Hill Road scores very high, is a 96, and that's considered an A. And that's now falling into a deferred maintenance. However, the deferred maintenance category doesn't last for long. There's a built-in deterioration curve within the program. So it may be a 96 today, but next year at this time, the roadway could be coming up into the system as, say, a 94 or 94.5. So it's very fluid. The systems, the data's always changing over time. This presents a summary of the condition of the roadways. Now, last time I was here, it looked a little different because that was the information that was collected initially, was served as the baseline. Now, since then, the projects that have been conducted, Steve's been updating the system. So you're going to see a fluctuation in the different condition ranges. But what this is showing right now is that the overall rating is a 76 for the town. And again, that's between 0 and 100. We see ratings ranging from as low as 58 to as high as 84 throughout. And we're working throughout New England on these types of projects. But you can see what we're highlighting here on this slide, if you look at the red bar with the arrow, this is the area that we're investigating now. And this is what Dan is going to talk to, where there's different types of surface treatments or pavement preservation techniques that we could now integrate into the system, which will allow you to, again, save the roads and extend the life expectancy of those roads moving forward. Okay, this time I'm handing off to Dan.
Thank you, Tony. Well, my name is Dan Patnod and I'm a licensed professional engineer who spent the last 20 years of my career in the pavement management, pavement preservation business. 10 of those 20 years was as a public works director, like Steve here. I was a public works director in the town of Lock Hill in New York State, about 50, 60 miles left of New York City. We had 165 miles of road there, 150 of which was paved. In the last 10 years of my career, I've been working for pavement management contractors. So that's my background in this business. I know your town is valuable tonight. I understand you have a big agenda. Probably a lot of this stuff is kind of boring to you. So I'll keep it as quick and tight as I can. There's two or three key concepts that I want to share with you tonight that I think are going to help make you able to do your job better and more efficiently. The first concept is this asphalt deterioration curve that we're looking at here. I call it an unfortunate fact of life because no matter how good we build roads or rebuild roads, they all start that slow decline and start decaying. It's a natural fact of life. There's nothing we can do about it. One of the key montras to this pavement management business is what we call doing the right treatment to the right road at the right time. And you can see some sample treatments depicted by those arrows on the red curve. The best pavement managers spend their money keeping good roads good because it's a lot more cost-effective to do that, spending money on good roads, maintaining them than it is to rebuild them. I'm going to show you some specific examples as we go along here. This is a chart. Everybody likes to look at how much things cost. I think in pavement management, it's important to look at what we call equivalent annual costs. So not only does what does something cost, and when I say something, I'm talking about specific treatments, alternative roadway treatments, but how long does it last? And I like to convert those into what we call equivalent annual costs. How much does a certain treatment cost per square yard? And I think you have a copy of the chart in your handout. And how long does it typically last? And of course, there's big variations depending on traffic, prior conditions when you apply a treatment, a whole bunch of variables. But we put together some data recently that shows some treatments, starting at the top of the curve, roads that are in good shape, you do crack sealing on. Roads that have started to decay a little bit, you do some single and double surface treatments. After that point in the curve, as they continue to progress downward, decay further, you need to get into traditional hot mix overlays and milling and paving. And then beyond that, you get into some recycling options. And then lastly, when a road is totally falling apart, you get into what we call full-depth reclamation, where you grind up what's there, stabilize it and pave it. Some representative costs for this part of New England are in that first column, per lane mile. I don't like to look at lane miles because lane widths vary. So I like to put everything in dollars per square yard, three feet by three feet. Those are pretty typical costs that we think you're going to see in the upcoming season. Asphalt cement prices have gone through the roof over the last few years. And that's the estimated service life in the third column there. Those treatments are typically expected to last. And the important number to look at is the last column. That's the equivalent annual cost. How much per square yard per year? You can see the numbers gradually increasing upward as you go from treatments that get employed at the top of the curve versus treatments at the bottom of the curve. So let's go ahead one more slide and you'll see those things in a vertical graphing format that really depicts the broad range. There's nothing more cost-effective in my mind in this business in maintaining roads than crack sealing. And it was our company's pleasure last year to do Steve's crack sealing program. It was a very robust program. I think we covered a little over 40 miles of your 110. That's very unusual, but there's no cheaper money spent in road maintenance than crack sealing. It's a simple matter of keeping that water from flowing down into the cracks because once it gets into the cracks and under the road, typically potholes fall. So that's smart money to spend. As you continue down the deterioration curve, you get into things like single and double surface treatments and thin overlays. Those are typically in the 40 to 60 cent per square yard per year range. After that, you get into more rehab treatments, 75 to a dollar per square yard per year. And then if a road falls apart and has to be rebuilt, you can be upwards of a buck and a quarter, a buck 35 per square yard per year. So you don't want to do that. Let me show you the power of those numbers in a specific example here. So really, I think it's the town, it's incumbent upon the town to maximize utilization of treatments with lower equivalent annual costs. So here's an example that's been customized for Leger. You have 110 center line miles of road in your community. The average pavement width is about 28 feet, so that works out to 1.8 million square yards of pavement. That's a pretty big number. Sounds certainly a lot bigger than 110 miles. So that's what Steve and the council here is managing, is 1.8 million square yards of pavement. One of the buzz, one of the catchphrases in this industry is you don't want to be a worst-first pavement manager. And a worst-first pavement manager is a department, a town that spends the bulk of its budget fixing the roads that people complain about. And it's only a natural human response to want to do that. The phone rings and they say, geez, have you been out to see our road lately? It's terrible. You need to fix it. You as elected officials, you want to fix it. You want to make people happy. That's your job. But it's a big mistake in the pavement management business to spend all of your money fixing the worst roads. Because all the roads that are good keep coming down that curve and before you know it, I've seen people get trapped, it's almost like quicksand. Everything just keeps coming down on top of you. And before you know it, your overall road surface rating condition has declined. So let's say though that you decided you wanted to be a worst-first type of pavement management community and you spend, say, on average, a dollar per square yard per year for treatments you selected to manage your network, then you would need a budget of 1.8 million dollars to manage your network. That's a pretty rich budget. If on the other hand, you committed to keeping good roads good and using some of those treatments higher on the curve, working on roads that are in better shape, you might be able to manage your network for 50 cents per square yard per year on average. That would work out to a budget of about 900,000. So obviously half what you might need if you spent all your money fixing bad roads. That's the power of keeping good roads good. So the benefits, as we said, you're preserving earlier investments that have been made in the roads. Most communities that we go to, their single most valuable financial asset is their road networks. You've got town halls, you've got water treatment facilities, sewer treatment facilities. But when you tally up the value of your road network, it's typically the most valuable asset you have. I think it's incumbent that we preserve it. We'll find that by maintaining roads good, you have less of those bad surprises at the end of the winter, roads that have fallen apart. And lastly, I think it's important for all of us to think long-term because after all of you have retired from your days on the council and Steve has moved on to retirement, the roads are still going to be out there. So I like to look at this next slide, which is a 50-year, a long-term view of a specific segment of road. And what we're depicting on this slide, and I'm not sure if it's printed in color in your handouts or not, but we're predicting two different, we're depicting two different management strategies. The blue set of kind of sawtooth lines there is what we'll call the preservation or proactive approach. And each of those blue diamonds is an intervention. Somebody comes in and does some sort of maintenance treatment. And those maintenance treatments are listed down in the lower left of the slide. You've got four different events of crack sealing over 50 years, a couple of surface, micro-surfacing applied twice, cave sealed twice, and then a mill and fade at the 25-year midpoint. When you tally up the current cost of all those treatments, it's about 30 bucks a square yard over 50 years. If on the other hand, you let the road decay to the point where it needed to be ground up and repaved, you might spend 20 bucks a square yard on that treatment only three times, but you spent twice as much money. Again, it's all about, just like seal coating your driveway at your house, putting Thompson water seal on the deck of your house, it's all about maintenance and preservation. So important thing, before we jump into these plans, and I think the town has done a good job implementing the plan, it sounds like you're on a right path continuing forward. But it's important that you sell it. It's important that Steve sell his plan to you and it's important that you as a team sell it to your constituents. Because you may find, when you go out and start spending money on a good road, people say, why are we spending money on this road when my road is all riddled with potholes and terrible shape? So they're going to think, do you guys have any idea what you're doing? Don't you know that my road's worse? So you need to educate them on why you're doing it this way. And there's a tool that we've come across, I'm not sure if it's in your handouts or not, but we've got some extra copies to leave with you. It's called a Quick Check Your Network Health. I shared it with Steve when we first visited with him two or three weeks ago. Within a few days, he had put Leger's numbers in, specific to Leger, and done some analysis of past history, last year's program and future programs. I'm going to show you an example and I'm going to turn it over to Steve to get into those Leger-specific examples. Basically, what this little red and white book, it's a great tool for helping you communicate the value of preservation to your constituents, is based on a remaining service life concept so that every segment of road that you have out there in your network has some sort of remaining service life. Typically, a new road is built for a 20 to 25-year service life. If it's decayed to the halfway point, it might have 10 or 15 years of service life left. If you've done a renovation to it, a rehabilitation, maybe it's got 20 years. But every segment of road has a remaining service life associated with it. And say, for example, if you had 300 lane miles of pavements in your network, which you don't have, but say you did, and you did nothing in a given construction season, you would lose 300 lane mile years of service life in that network. So it's a little bit of a strange concept to get your arms around, but it's about this remaining service life, lane mile years concept. So what my recommendation is, is that Steve work with your board to develop annual plans that achieve whatever your objectives are for your roads. Are you happy with an RSR of 76? If you are, then you ought to develop annual work plans that get 100, in your case, you have 220 lane miles, so you want to put 220 lane mile years of service life back into your network every year. That would keep you right at that RSR of 76. So I'm going to take you through an example here and then I'll turn it over to Steve. This is an example of a community that has 150 center line miles of road, all two lanes wide, so 300 lane miles. They have a budget of 1.3 million for pavement management and six miles, six center line miles, that is real bad, the stuff that everybody calls you to complain about, says, when are you going to fix my road? So the question to be answered here is what's the best annual work program for this particular community? One program would be what we call the worst first. So this community has decided, and I apologize, you're not going to be able to follow these numbers from your seats there, and maybe you can see them on the printout, I hope.
I like the town name.
You like that, huh? So Potholes City, what they've decided to do is spend their 1.3 million fixing the roads they get the most complaints about. So without getting into the gory detail, which I won't bore you with, you can see they spent a bulk of their budget up here in the reconstruction category and in the rehab category and very little in the preservation category. So when you tally up the lane mile years of new service life that they put back into this network, you'll see it's 162 lane mile years. But the community has 300 lane miles of road. So a break-even year for that community is 300 lane miles a year. So they go backwards. So this worst-first program, the outcomes of that program, the good news, of course, is that all 12 lane miles of bad roads that people complain about got fixed. So the phone stops ringing. That makes everybody happy. But let's look at the bad news. The bad news is that you only touched 18 lane miles of the network, 6% of the network. You know, that's not very good. Your equivalent annual cost of the treatments you used is about $8,000 per lane mile a year, a little over a dollar per square yard per year. And most importantly, your program yielded a net deficit of 138 lane mile years. So your network slid backwards. You can do that one year. You can do that two years. But if that's your pattern over time, your roads will end up looking like that road. Now let's look at a more progressive town, and in fact, we call it Progressive Town, Massachusetts. And let's look at how they deploy their money. We all recognize and understand you can't blow off the bad roads. You can't say, we're not spending any money fixing bad roads. The key to this is you maybe fix those over a two, three, four-year period, depending on your situation, and not spend all your money in a given budget year on bad roads. So they've spent some money in reconstruction, some money in rehabilitation, but look at the money that's spent down here on what we call preservation treatments, like crack sealing, chip sealing, slurry sealing, micro-surfacing and cave sealing. And look at the lane mile years of new service life they've injected into their network by employing those cost-effective treatments. Ultimately, they end up with a surplus or a gain in condition rating as a result of that efficient spending. So their budget outcomes are this. The bad news, of course, is that only half of the bad roads got fixed. So they're still feeling complaints from the other half of the residents that are living on bad roads. But the good news is this. 68 lane miles got some sort of treatment, 23% of the network. That's outstanding. Their average equivalent annual cost was only in the $4,000 per lane mile a year range or 58 cent per square yard per year range. And most importantly, the program yielded a net gain in service life injected into the network. So it's a little worksheet that we shared with Steve here two or three weeks ago. And he's taken that worksheet and gone on to develop worksheets specific to your town. And I'll let him explain those to you.
Okay. You're familiar with the form. I'm not going to go through all the treatments, but what I've done is I've gone through the records that I have, which are very detailed, detailed enough to populate this form, from 1997 through 2010. And we went backwards, 1,760 lane mile years. Now, why is that? Well, there's a couple of main reasons. One was we were focused on catching up on our main roads, which were important, but we were underfunded. You can see the average funding at the bottom was $450,000 a year, which is half the number that Dan presented for what would be necessary to maintain our network. I had been preaching $750,000 for many years. And I think it's up to 900,000 at this point primarily because of the dramatic increase in cost of asphalt. It used to be able to be put in place for $38 a ton not too long ago. Now I'm looking at 70, double that for the higher-end projects, which is why we have to look for something that we've been looking at, is surface treatment. So that's almost two millennial lane mile years, two millennia of lane mile years in the last 14 years up to 2010 that we went backwards. Now, I don't, it might not be intuitive that when you drive around a road that they've gone that far backward, but I think we're sitting on a bubble right now and we have to capture the gains that we've made in some of our important roads. This is what we did in 2011. I think one of the important results of this initiative was that the mayor, the council went forward with a bond and the people supported it overwhelmingly. And as a result, we have injected around $3.5 million on top of our normal appropriation into the road network as far as funding is concerned. So in 2011, this is what we did. We did a fairly broad range of different services, starting with crack sealing, as was mentioned, over 44 miles. You probably saw it just about everywhere you drove. And reclamation, mill overlay, level overlay, some of the higher... everywhere you drove, and reclamation, mill overlay, level overlay, some of the higher-end treatments, and then we just started dabbling in the surface treatment. So that's what we did last year, about $1.1 million spent in combination of the annual appropriation with some of the bond funds. And this is the pictorial depiction of the roads that were treated one way or another. So it's a pretty substantial number of roads that received treatment, albeit most of it was crack sealing, but there was application of an appropriate treatment for those roads over, I don't know, it was nearly 45 to 50% of our roads. 2011, this is the result. We gained 170 lane mile years on the basis of the treatments applied, and much of that came from crack sealing. That cannot be done every year. Once you crack seal most of your network that needs it, you're three years out from probably doing it again. We're going to be doing some crack sealing this year, and probably two years from now, or as necessary, but we won't see that kind of injection, so we've got to move to some of the intermediate treatments. But we did make substantial gains in our network last year. This is our present condition. Backlog, if we were to apply the exact treatment that every road needs right now, we would need to apply $10 million, which we're not going to do in one year. And that's why we're talking about the plan. But we have a road surface rating of 76, and that's not at the lowest end of things. You heard the range that have been seen, 58 to 84, so it's not terribly bad. You're not going to be able to read this, but this is the proposed three years ahead for pavement management. You might be able to read it on your handout, but this shows where the different treatments that are proposed initially, but we're injecting $300,000 of surface treatments that have been yet to be decided upon, I'll tell you why, for 2013 and 2014. So not this year, but the next two years after, we're going to be employing, our intention is to employ more surface treatments. And the reason why I have not decided is because there's a large range of options on doing a lot of inspections in other towns to look at the results of their service treatments. We had one failed experiment this year, on Spicer Hill Road, and we will probably not be doing that treatment again, but it was something. And it did gain us something, but the cost in hassle and aggravation was too great. So anyway, that's why, we've got a placeholder there. This is a graphic depiction of the work that's planned for the next three years. As you see, it's not as many roads, because there's not as much crack sealing, but people up in Elgin Heights, neighboring Hill, and that area are going to be pretty happy if the road, I mean, if the water main project proceeds smartly. But the whole east side of town, Shuville Road, Lantern Hill Road, oh, let me stop here, well, let me get to the funding, I'll do that when I get to the funding. And this is what we plan, propose to gain, 138 lane mile years over the next three years. Is what we're looking at, roughly. So that's the positive direction. At the end of the bond period, we will have gained nearly 300 lane mile years of life, and then it's going to be a matter of what are we going to do from there. Okay, this is, you're not going to understand all this, but I'll just quickly go through what we have. In the middle, you see bond funds and road restoration from service surplus funds. Those are funds that are presently on hand. About $3.3 million still remain available to do work. The SIP funds of $1.2 million anticipates over the next three budget years, two budget years, so it goes back to this present one, only $400,000 a year. That's what's been, what we have this year, that's what's been proposed so far this year. And that's all I carry, because I'm not expecting anything more. But, of course, if there was more, we'd do more. But we will get, this will take us to the end of the bond period and put us with gains yet. So there's a total of $4.5 million, of that, $600,000 is estimated to go to drainage. What you see on the top is some credits. Other funding credit is money coming from the BIA. And in addition to the project on Lantern Hill Road, which is a $1 million project, it's fully funded by the federal government, through the BIA, this project that Mr. Monahan was talking about. The Lantern Hill Road is eligible for those funds, and has presently been submitted to the Mash and Tuckets for initial stages of planning. And so from the Leger, both sections of Lantern Hill Road and Leger will be, are going to be supposedly accomplished. Coachman Pike, that neighborhood up there, in those side streets, that's already been put out to bid for design, and so that's going to be probably paved up next year. So that represents funds that are going to offset our local funds, that will inject life into our road system that's not accounted for there. The water project credit represents the amount of money coming from the water project that will offset the costs we would have had to spend on the roads, because there's an eligible amount of trench pavement. So those help us advance that number better, or our network condition better than it would be otherwise advanced. So this is what the program is projected to get us. We're at 76 now, and is projected to bring us to 81 by the end of 2014. I don't need to go into the details there. And finally, I think this is the final, here's the forecast relative to where we go at the conclusion of this bond. This is, gives you an idea of where we will end up, depending on the annual dollars devoted in the out-years. And you can see, to keep things flat, the model from Beta is showing about an $800,000 annual appropriation. You saw $900,000 from the seal coating model, so we're somewhere in that neighborhood. So if we get to 2015 and we don't pick up a number in that range, then I think we've got convergence on some models that are showing we're going to start losing traction. So that if we go with our present funding of $400,000 a year, by 2020, we will decline to below 80 again. And I'm not sure if that momentum increases this linear graph, I think that's the way it models out. So that, I think that concludes the presentation. I'm not sure if you want to ask any more questions, if there's any confusion. And if you don't have questions you want to ask now, I'd be happy to entertain any other time.
We have a question.
Yes?
During the public meeting, when we presented this and talked about the bonding, at that time, I stated that, went back in to date of 2097, put in the program, and leave, the statement that was made at the time was, we got lucky and the roads improved. So what changed in the data that showed that it didn't improve?
Well, it's the, I believe that the modeling, based on what we injected into our road system, we have done a lot of things quickly, but there are a lot of roads that are at a point on the curve where there's a latent, there's a latent bubble, meaning, right now, their condition is, during the inspection, was not as apparently bad as it might be at some point in the not-too-distant future, meaning that when it hits a point on the curve where you start losing it quickly. Where we have a lot of roads, we have not done anything but crack seal. And so it's, we did talk about the counter, and it was counterintuitive, to see that much of a decline on paper relative to the inspection results that we saw. And the other thing was, the inspections that we conducted in the 97 through the 99 era were done by college interns with templates that they did the best they could with, and so we used their data on a less sophisticated level. So if we went back and applied the exact same inspection techniques then, that we did in 2010, we might have had a different assessment of where our roads were in comparison. But that is a, it is counterintuitive, but I think it's troubling that we might have a large number of roads that are going to deteriorate very quickly if we don't do something with them.
Councilor Dick?
Shuville Road Bridge, is that eligible for BIA funding?
Yes, but we've had to finesse that one. We are pulling the plug on the, this was the subject of a more recent meeting over there, we were going to pull the plug on the state bid bridge program. The red tape is just unmerciful, and they've just reorganized to the deep, and now it's even worse. And the BIA funding cannot cover it as a bridge, because it's not a great enough span. So it has to be done differently, and so there's been an approach developed whereby it can be done, and that is going to be submitted. They've already got approval to buy the structure through the BIA funding, and again, it'll be done with Mash and Tucket resources. And we still have to craft it so that the various, the MOU that was approved by the Mash and Tuckets will apply their funding, and we have a $100,000 LOCP that's being held in place for that job as well. So that, we just met last week on that, to try to move that forward. It's still, it's not through the red, all the red tape that it has to go through, it's just absurd, it's been absurd.
It's slowly falling apart.
What's that?
It's slowly falling apart.
Right, yeah. But we almost wished that the storm had wiped it out, because if that happens, it would have already been brand-new and up by now. That's the way these things seem to go.
Councilor Song.
What's slurry seal?
Well...
It's a similar product to micro-surfacing, it's a combination of asphalt emulsion, aggregate, mineral filler. It goes down in a liquidy paste form, takes about 45 minutes before you can drive on it. When it's done, you end up with, I'll call it like an industrial driveway seal. So, kind of like what you put on your driveway, it's got some aggregate in it, it probably totals about 3/16 of an inch thick when you're all done. Typically lasts about five years, you know, it's just like a driveway seal, you've got to go back and do it.
So that's not the same as the experiment that we did. No, 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 that's, it actually, yeah, no, that's okay. None of those are anything to compare with that.
So the message I take is that the mayor needs to plan in the future to spend $800,000 a year on roads?
Well, certainly more than $400,000. I mean, we have to tweak that.
715, this is budget.
What's that?
Coach Pike.
The, there, you know, I mean, there's probably a lot of discussion that could revolve around what's the exact right number. I mean, the different models are saying different things. $750,000 was somewhat validated by what they had presented with the inflation relative to the cost of asphalt. So, I mean, I think that these are standards, or the becoming standards in the industry. And I am concerned that we have propped up our road condition to some degree with what we've injected into it in the last several years the best we can with the funding we've had. And I'm not sure it's going to be sustainable at those levels.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Then I thank you, Mr. Maslin, and all the gentlemen who presented. I suspect that you can't possibly enjoy a Sunday afternoon drive with your spouses as beautifully in the scenery, as you're too busy.
You're absolutely right.
You're right.
Okay. But thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next on our agenda is comments of town councillors. Any councillors wish to comment?
I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of Seasonal Home, as many of us did, I think Apple Leger did. I think Lord Leger's newest business, I hope I'm right in that. It's located in the old Methodist Church building in Galesbury, across from where the new CVS will go in. It's a welcome addition to Leger, it's the kind of business we like to see, and we hope that Leger residents and Galesbury residents will stop by there.
Okay, other town councillors, Councilor Davis?
I would like to congratulate Stephanie Calhoun, who was announced by Pairing Magazine as having been selected to represent Connecticut at the Moms' Congress on Education and Learning in Washington DC. And that's quite an honor, because they obviously choose one person from every state, and our Stephanie is our representative. So congratulations to Stephanie. And then as far as other congratulations, I believe you may have received this Marie Holman's 50th, yes, that's 5-0, 50th anniversary celebration on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they're doing a little, a little celebration for her on March 21st. So congratulations to Marie.
Well, we're on congratulations, I think the Leger High School basketball team is doing quite well.
Yes.
Great to see that. You know, it's been a number of years since the basketball team has had a good season. Nice to see March Madness happening in Leger. Other town councillors? Okay, we have minutes for approval. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes, February 2nd?
Some more.
I'm sorry, February 22nd. Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Roxanne, please call, I'm sorry, you can move all the minutes.
I can move them all together.
We'll move them all together, with the regular meeting minutes as well, of February 22nd. Motion and second. Roxanne, please call.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mrs. Deppi.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Dubrasky.
Yes.
Mr. Eichler.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mrs. Nebraska.
Yes.
Eighteen favor, one extension.
Okay, the motion passes. Communications list, we have a communications list that's been presented, are there any comments, questions, additions? Okay, seeing none. Councillor and Subcommittee reports, Administration's Committee, Councilor Eichler.
The Administration Committee met earlier tonight. We moved forward several ordinances, which we'll see later. We had a very busy agenda tonight, so there were a few items we did not get to, we also had several appointments, and again, we will see those later tonight.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for Administration? Okay, Community Services, Councilor Marshall.
There was some discussion and comments, we were unable to make.
Okay, so this is our report. Any questions or comments for Community Services? Finance, Councilor France.
In addition to the agenda items, along we have begun the process of reviewing the general government budget, we held our first meeting last Thursday, our next meeting is tomorrow, and followed by the following Tuesday, which will complete the review of the general government budget.
And those were meetings, you went from 1:00 to 7:00 last Thursday.
They started, started 1:00 o'clock each day, and one of them last Thursday ended about 7:00, so I can anticipate about the same time for tomorrow and following Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Are there questions or comments for Finance? Okay, Information Technology, Councilor Davis?
Yes, at our meeting, Town Clerk Mike Curley came to our meeting, and he spoke to us about his initiatives for the Town Clerk website. The, not to be dismayed, it's not a separate website, it is part of our own website, and he is very enthusiastic about populating pages on the website, he just has some great ideas, you know, dog license procedures will be there, and, you know, public services, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. It's very refreshing, and we're certainly supportive of what he is expecting to do in the future on the website. And again, it won't be additional funds. He used the Norwalk website as an example, who actually uses the same template site as we do, and so we should be seeing lots of great stuff coming up on the, on our website. And then he also talked about an email distribution list for dog license renewals. So that's something we haven't done in the past, is the ability to just email people and say, you know, your dog license is up for renewal.
It would be nice if you could do it online.
And that's coming as well. Lots of those kind of things are coming, there's lots of plans to do that type thing, and we did speak specifically about that. The only other item, the main other item, was that we, there has been a review of five software packages for land use tracking, permit tracking. We kind of narrowed it down to two, and there'll be a demo coming up here next week on those. In the budget, regardless of which one we pick, the money in the budget that was proposed will cover either one of those software packages. I think that those packages, I should also add, will pay for themselves in terms of lost business.
Okay, I will lead off, comments and questions. I had a comment from two weeks ago, I was not able to attend the town...
So you watched a little?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Counsel, actually, it was three weeks ago now. But, yeah, so I did actually watch, I've watched live, web streaming, and two things struck me immediately. Thing one was that Councilor Marshall is sitting in his chair and pretending to wear a tie.
I like the evening.
I thought that was significant. Thing two was, at 7:00, I tried to start watching, and it wasn't until, I think, around 7:07, that there was actually something to watch, and if I wasn't smart enough to refresh my browser every 30 seconds, I might have never...
You had technical difficulties?
Might have never known. And the point being that I sense just tonight, and I know, you know, we don't have highly-paid people who are outing just to run our cameras, but we really need, if we're going to advertise that, you know, the meeting is available at 7, at 7, there needs to be something to watch, and I personally have watched, you know, being an Insomniac, the C-SPAN, or the CTN, the Connecticut Legislature, and it's not uncommon to turn on the camera and you just see people milling about.
Yeah.
Turn on the TV, that's what they're doing, they're doing... They're doing nothing. But there's broadcasting so that you know that when something starts, yeah, I mean, if you're watching nothing, it's because nothing's happening, which is, which is better than, you know, having a blank screen, and you have no idea whether it's, it's blank because nothing's happening, or it's blank because something's happening, and you're just not getting through on the transmission. So, hopefully, we can figure out ways.
We also talked about just pointing the camera to the screen there, and it would say the town council meeting of such and such a date will be starting shortly. You know, that's an option. Although I kinda like your C-SPAN approach, where we're just sort of milling around.
The problem is, we better not have any volume?
But anyway, so we'll definitely take that in under advisement.
I walked in here tonight at ten minutes to seven, and I mean, if someone was watching us mill about for ten minutes, I mean, it's fine. Yep, there was nothing.
Definitely wouldn't have been a problem with that.
Right. Wouldn't have been very exciting, not, not the excitement that I'm sure they're all out there sensing right now.
Like now, yes.
Are there other questions or comments for my team? Okay, next, we have land use.
Mr. DeBreski? We met last week. We also have several items planned to attend the today's meeting. Big thing, we're still continuing to discuss this, the work, the work to find between zoning and that. At our last meeting, we invited representatives from several of the surrounding communities to address us, to get their opinion for what they felt were advantages and disadvantages. We had the pleasure of having Dave Rose, who is the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Rodden, and Jim Butler, who's the executive director of Scott, come up and address us and give us their opinions. Their basic, as they're standing right now, is that it's really up to the town how they decide to do it, but they both felt that it was beneficial for the annual commission as far as staff is concerned. It's also beneficial as far as posting minutes and public notices and things in the paper with more close effect within the town. We are continuing to discuss it, and we'll continue on our next meeting to go through it. I've also got a copy of the draft orders that join you and Greg and Todd's here. I'll probably take that, and we're dead into working from having agreed right on the orders.
Okay, Western's colleagues?
One comment, which I sent an email earlier. We're going to schedule a special meeting of land use, we need to act on Mr. Major's, or the town's lease for Mr. Major. So I think I copied the mayor on that. Or no, I just copied the three of them.
The others, yeah.
We need to get some action for the lease on ten-twenty-five and ten-eighty-seven Cardinal Leder Highway.
Right.
Because we're planning to lease that to a farmer who needs to plan.
We had forwarded that off to the mayor for draft lease, and we hadn't, had not seen that yet.
Sir, Roxanne, the comment is with the lawyer, is that right? Do we know?
Let's check on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for land use? Roy, I'm sorry.
Well, back there, talking about putting ball fields at the Clark Farm, that's still an item?
We haven't given up on that, so to say, for right now, because when they came and addressed us, they had no business plan to talk, you know, how they were gonna pay for building and maintaining and stuff like that. So we're waiting for them to come back to us with how they're gonna fund it, and how they're gonna maintain it with a business plan.
I did note in the Parks and Rec minutes that they actually have had Mr. Gear go out there and to give them a price for putting in two ball fields. So, they're actually gonna have some numbers here shortly.
Yeah, I actually ran into him a couple of days ago and spoke to him about it as well. Says that they're working to put together a business plan where you're requesting we take that into consideration.
All right, Board of Education?
Just a couple items. The CMG and CAP testing should be finished this week. That seemed to go well. Obviously, you don't know if it went well until the scores come in, but those will be completed this week. And then the Board of Education approved a twenty-five-thousand-dollar expenditure from their CNR account to hire an architect to look at the possibility of putting on in addition, or to make improvements to be able to move the sixth grade to the middle school.
Is that a CNR fund that we have to approve and spending from?
I don't know.
No, they have, they have the money. I'm sorry, you could be right. Dr. Greer told me they have the money.
But they have a CNR fund that we, they have to ask, ask us to use it. That's the money that goes in there at the end of the year.
Okay. Now, I did, I can relook at those minutes. I was not at that meeting, but I do always read the minutes, and the minutes said it came from the CNR fund.
But it could be coming from money that they budgeted this year for CNR, so.
Okay, I will take that as a follow-up item. I did, there was some concern, I guess I should add, that the, that we had done a facility study, townwide facility study, and that we had had a study done, the report that said that if we did that project, there were a couple of options, but the cheapest option was a nineteen-million-dollar project. The other was a twenty-two-million-dollar project. And there was some concern that they're going off to spend this money, oh, not going off, that's not the correct word, that they would be using this money to hire an architect when it seemed like the money that would be spent was a little more than we could expect the townspeople to approve. So, I think that's the best way to put it.
You did that very well.
Thank you.
But it's prohibitive to spend that kind of money.
You have to go to the voters, the townspeople, and, you know.
Twenty-two million seemed a bit pricey to renovate a building.
Right, we could build a school for less than that, so.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go very far to the voters to know what the answer to a twenty-two-million-dollar funding question would be. Okay, other questions for the Board of Ed? All right, WPCA?
Today, I met with the mayor and the wastewater treatment facility supervisor and the water department fiscal assistant. We looked at the budgets for both the sewer and the water that's being forwarded to Finance, Finance Committee. I also want to report to Dr. Monahan and the rest of the town that the WPCA meeting minutes have been posted for all of two thousand twelve, they are up to date. We've got two thousand eleven up there, and we're now going back to two thousand and ten, because there are a number of meetings for two thousand and ten still have not been put up. I spoke with the office assistant today, she was working on that. And last, the Algen Heights project is moving forward. I met with the permanent municipal building committee last week, where they were working on plans to put the project out to bid, and we're hopeful of getting out there this spring to set up.
Okay, comments, questions? I would note that we do have an agenda item later tonight, it's under the Administrative Committee, but it's to, as we set up, public hearing date for an ordinance that would have a WPCA that's made up of people who are not us. Are there any other commission or board reports? Yes, Councillor Ed?
The pension board, yet this morning, they approved a new investment policy. They also approved a new investment allocation, which is a vast improvement over both of the former ones. They, when the money was moved to Webster Bank, they did a temporary allocation, and that two-month temporary allocation earned over four percent. So, the investment kid, the pension board's doing well. They're eagerly awaiting the defined contribution plan, so they're waiting for that ordinance. It's gonna give them the authority to do that as well, but it was a very productive meeting. We did speak with Chris Rollins from FIA via the phone, and he explained all of the funds that they were gonna move the money into, and they were very excited about it. They all seemed to know all the funds, I didn't know a lot of them, but that was fine. But it was approved, and they're moving forward.
Four percent, can I, can I invest with the pension board?
Yeah.
The, the ordinance, I think, has the periodic reporting requirement.
I think the periodic report was shown this morning to the pension board. They made a couple of recommendations. I know that you will be receiving it in the next, I mean, it was mentioned to Rox, that she would get it later this week, so.
Okay, good. And only because they're so new, I don't think you've ever, this will be the initial report.
No, they, they plan on giving you a report in March for up to March, so they're going to be on their agenda to do this report quarterly.
Thank you very much, I look forward to it. Any questions on the pension board? Any other board or commission reports? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
As you know, we have posted both the zoning and wetlands enforcement officer and highway superintendent job descriptions. They have run public. We have been pleased with the response we've gotten to both of those, and zoning will probably be starting interviews shortly. We do have some qualified applicants there. The highway superintendent job post then closes on the twenty-third, and we will hope to get someone, get people then for interviews shortly after that. The, you, I said forwarded you some correspondence about the Subdaze property. It has been placed on the Bonding Commission agenda. This is a property north of the Subdaze, that the state will be granting money to the town in order to purchase that piece of property as a, what is the technical term, Captain?
The last minute.
Blast zone?
Yeah, blast zone.
Blast zone mitigation, whatever, okay. So.
If I, I'll just take a second to explain, but there are, there are weapons, the stowage locations on the submarine base, and so for safety reasons, there is a certain area where there's not allowed to be anything. Over time, bombs tend to get bigger, that's the simplest way to put it. So, right now, there is nothing within the blast zone, but in the future, if bombs should ever get bigger, the blast zone would have to get bigger. And that's the concern, that if the zone were to grow beyond the limits of where the base is, what's out there? With that limit, what would, what would happen in reality is if people had homes that would be in the blast zone, well, then the Navy just won't be allowed to store the bombs there. And then that, that presents, you know, possible down arrow for the submarine base in a, in a brack consideration, if the capability does not exist. So that's, that's the concern, and that's why there is a proposal that would improve the submarine base by actually acquiring some town, some property that's currently privately owned, turning it over to the town with some legal restrictions that it would never be, it would never be homes or anything on it.
I hope you just didn't reveal confidential information about bombs.
Of course not.
Bombs are getting bigger.
Bombs get bigger. They get bigger, they get smaller, but things happen all the time.
Well, they get smaller, but they get bigger blasts, I think.
Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Back to me. Planet Charlie Carneau has been doing a lot of the work on that, working with the property owner. I did have a conversation with a representative at the Subdaze, and he's keeping us informed on the progress there to make. And, but again, most of the documents and community events are in place. My assistant, Mark Bancroft, continues working very aggressively on recycling. We have a steady flow of residents coming into our office to exchange their eighteen-gallon blue recycling bins for twenty-four-gallon bins.
You can blame that on Councillor Davis.
Yes, she started it well.
Or you can give her the credit.
I played Councillor Davis on the person who said, do you have any more of the bins? And I looked in, and I said, no, I'm sorry, we don't. He said, now, these are those big ones on wheels, right? No, no, we don't have any of those. But it's gone very well. You'll start to see those appearing throughout town. We're also ordering the stickers that we can place on recycling bins that people use. Some people use large bins, and so we'll get some nice stickers to put on there, so they can be readily identified by the trash pickup, and also readily identified by Mark Bancroft in Winston Avery for people who don't have a barrel outside with something in front of it. We're looking into the, the idea of a video, and the way the weather gets a little nicer, maybe when the flowers come up again, we can do that. And, and our tip of the week for recycling, aerosol cans. Okay, I'm keeping the brand name over here. Aerosol cans go into recycling when they're empty. Previously, you were not to do that. So that's it. We'll be having a tip every, every month on that. Okay, and we are spending a significant amount of town around, time around town with trash accumulation, and that's a continuous job. And I must say, we're being rather aggressive with that. When we get a call from someone, and we wait until one or two trash cycles, and then we follow up on them. So, if you see something, say something. I met with Lieutenant Samuel Isarelli, who is the commander of E-tru, we had a very good discussion. It was primarily about the use of Bledyard's police force outside of our town boundaries. That has been a concern of mine. We have had some recent occasions where I believe it has been critical, the effects of that. So, I have written, you've seen a letter that I wrote to him, he was very open, a very, very good conversation with him, and we continue, we hope to have that dialogue continuing on that. He did make a very interesting comment to me, something that we may have all thought of, but, you know, not necessarily in terms of our town, but one of the things he suggested, and it was from a town similar to ours, and it was, I believe, a town that he worked with as far as having a resident trooper. But he said, one of the things we want to concentrate on is response time. And I know, you know, certainly we will all put that as a number-one priority for police, but I would never think with the limited staff we have of doing that. But he said, you know, this town, this town committed themselves to having a four-minute response time. And I thought about that, and I haven't had a discussion yet. Sergeant Gilman and Lieutenant Fabelstein went to meeting with me. I haven't thought in terms of that, that's something I would like to look into. We certainly have the time when the calls go out, and I'm sure there's all kinds of things that could tell you the time that a person arrives, but I think that's absolutely critical, and it was something that would, something that would be an excellent gauge of what, of the value of our police force. And I know people are concerned in terms of some of the conversations about a police station and where it's gonna be, and people are continuously bringing up, if you move the police station to this location, it's gonna be farther away from the center of town, farther away from, from my house. And I think, and I've heard councillors say it also, what you need to realize is that in our town, the police operate out of their cars, and the police force really is on the road twenty-four-seven. And if you think about it, it's not unreasonable to think with an east car and a west car, or at least one east car and one west car, being anywhere in town within four minutes. I don't think that's unthinkable. And so, it's something that I may try to look into, see if we can investigate that. We met with representatives from CL and P regarding tree trimming. I must say, CL and P has been extremely aggressive. It's just as it seems that, you know, you get, you know, they'll notify you, you got, you know, you're gonna get, you're gonna get three days of trucks in your, in your town, that's how it was early on. And then you think that's gone, and you're on your own again, and then you'll get, you know, and you'll get another wave. And we've had five trucks operating in Galesbury, and doing what, two things. In the Christie Hill and Birdland area, they're doing what's called extensive tree trimming. And I gave the councillor a package with some little pictures in it. Basically, that's anything that's within vertically within eight feet of the power lines is cut. Then they have the standard tree trimming, which is, is just, you know, the normal things, the things hanging over the wires. They've been at that very aggressively, and, you know, one of the, one of the things of Bledyard besides our roads is the fact that we have canopy roads, and you're always very concerned if they do this, are we suddenly gonna have these large swaths going down the highway? And I haven't really noticed a difference, but they have certainly been aggressively cutting. They do notify the property owner, and the property owner has the right to opt out. And of course, in the event of a storm, be a very unpopular person on the street, but they have the right to do that. We do have people who are calling us and contacting us, hey, they were here, they left some brush here. They do, they do a very good job of cleaning up, and the only thing they don't clean up, I told, is the very large stuff. They leave that there, and with good reason. That probably won't stay there very long. So, they're being very aggressive on that. I also sent you a report about the Whalehead Road substation. When I brought that up, I knew three people who came, there was kind of this district person, and then there was an arborist, who's, interestingly enough, he's. enough, used to work for Holdridge. And she is the CL&amp;P person that goes around the roads and identifies the different types of trees and things. Very good. And then there is a person, Bill McKinnon, who has been designated, they, they keep rethinking their process. And at first, this, uh, first woman we met was going to kind of be the representative to a few different towns. And we said, "Well, can't we have our own representative?" Now, it turns out that this person is in fact designated for that. It's not his full-time job. He, he's just in power transmission and other types of things, but, but he, he loves this type of work. And in the event of another storm, something severe, he would be assigned to our town. We spoke about the idea that's been identified on public safety. We've been working very much, what do we want? What are our top 10 places we want restored? And one of the things we asked about is, "Why can't you just give us a truck? Just give us a truck, follow our public workspeople around over the first couple of days to just open up the roads." And interesting statistic, they told us that for Irene, there were five trucks in the entire southeastern Connecticut. So, you know, they said, "Couldn't do it." But again, I think they're starting to rethink this, and I, and it's, and they're very responsive when you break things up. They do get back to you and say, "Hey, we thought about what you said, we're looking at it." So, I, I'm very encouraged. It seems to be very easy to work with. As far as road funding goes, a question came up before, and as you know, in my budget, I maintain the town-funded, the taxpayer-funded road amount at $400,000. And I recognize in normal years, we were funding $750,000. The thought was, and I'm sure was your thought process last year, that because we had this infusion of $5 million to $3.5 million, that for three years, you know, can we really sustain that much? So, we probably could use more money, but I think in balance, $400,000 is probably a reasonable amount to add to the other money that we're using. And finally, I appreciate the comment about Marie Holman and her 50 years, and there's even more incredible fact that I'd like to share with you, but she'll have to come to the Parks and Recreation Center next week to find out.
I don't think you're going to vote.
Oh, you're invited.
Sure. The details are, it's 21st at what time?
Six fifteen. Simia Box.
Okay. And it is at the Parks and Recreation Center, and it's, same as the Board of Education.
Okay, well, most of you are invited.
Are there questions for the mayor? Yes, Mr. Councilor Grant.
Um, in the Lethley Health District minutes of last month, they talked about a $10,000 grant on OPM, Officer Policy and Management, and it's called Legit Police Youth Connection. Do you know anything about that?
Yes. Uh, that's probably Safe Teams, Team Safe, once every two or three months ago, meaning of, of that, it's a group, and it's funded through Legit.
I don't think that's, that's what you say, Kids, what you're talking about. That's a different grant.
See, I think it's Safe Teams.
It is a program through Legit.
They have a representative from Lethley who comes.
Oh, yeah, I'm very familiar with that one, but I, I think this is different.
I know, I know that that's one of the things they've done. I will look into that one.
Okay. Because I mean, Legit Police Youth Connection, that's not Safe Kids.
All right. All right. I will get back to you. But you did bring up Legit. I just want to tell you that tonight is a big night for Legit, because Zoning Envisad is having their, uh, public hearing, and then their moments of truth. And I, I'm optimistic that there will be positive results coming out of that, which will have a slight reward for ledger in terms of, in terms of reduction of loss. So, we will wait to see how that turns out.
Are there questions, comments, or thoughts?
The roads look great as a result of Mr. Bancroft's efforts. I've noticed, at least where I drive, a significant decrease in trash left out by the roadside, and I think it's a result of his efforts and efficiency. And also want to remind you about the thermometer idea.
I've got my in commercial.
Yeah?
Yeah. I know, it's kind of, just, just maybe, you know, people keep asking about the cutout in the wall. Where else would it go in the cutout? Be a great place to, mom. Yep. Lots of ideas coming out of that.
Other comments, questions for the mayor?
Okay, just one more, speaking of signs. As, as most of you know, some of the work is going to be starting shortly on Highland Drive, and that's one of the worst roads in town. And what I've asked Steve Maslin to do is, you know, first they start the, the drainage work upfront, but a little experiment, we have somebody who's at Public Works that does signs, and, you know, maybe at the right at the Gallup Hill intersection, they're just put a sign, you know, "Road work is going to be getting here, consider alternate routes", or something like that. People don't like surprises, and even though they want the roads fixed, they don't like to be surprised when their road's fixed. So, maybe we should, maybe we should start doing something like that and just start notifying people with, you know, with some nice signs, or, well, in, in the city.
Even cardboard sign works.
Yeah, I mean, in, in wooded areas, if we had to make up paper ones, we'd just put them on trees or something, you know, tie them to trees. But again, just to let people know something's coming, I think would help.
All right. Next item on the agenda, first item under Old Business deals with a previously tabled motion on, uh, light ordinance. Is there any movement on that?
There is no movement. We have been discussing it. We've come up with several issues. I'd like to suggest that we remove this from the agenda until such time as we are ready to deal with it. I'll make a motion for that if you'd like, but.
Jim. Okay. Here we go. No objection.
We have, we have a number of issues that we're trying to work through, as well as a stack of ordinances from other towns, so we're, we're trying to do the best job we can with this.
I understand. You're saying that you have, you have no perceivable light at the end of the tunnel.
Not in the near future.
On moving, well, that's what, that's what makes the light show up. So, we'll just take it off the agenda until you tell me otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, can I? He said without objection, so let me, can I?
Does he have an objection?
Well, I don't know if it's an objection, but, I mean, is this going to be like in my lifetime, or?
How long is it in front of you?
Well, we have somebody identified that would be, um, that we hope we're doing that job, and it would be kind of a shame not to, um...
We're looking at a couple of months, not a couple of years.
Okay.
Again, just trying to weed our way through, make sure that we don't create, as I've said before, another onerous ordinance that is just, um, this is a very, very subjective ordinance. And so, we're trying to do as good a job as we can with it to make sure that it doesn't just turn into a, a picky Ewing kind of effect.
Okay. And my final comment was that land use referred it to admin about a year and a half ago, so if I seem impatient, that is why.
But we have a different admin now.
I would remind the Council.
Yeah, and I actually, I've, I've actually spoken to the Council about that. I, I agree with them taking the time to get it right, because there's nothing worse than an ordinance that you don't like what your next-door neighbor has in their yard, and you call up and try to use the light ordinance. So, it has to be clearly written, so it can't be used that way, but I think it will come out in your lifetime.
Thank you. I, I personally am very happy with the Montville ordinance. I'll just pass that along for a rest.
Do you have them on for me?
Maybe I do.
Okay.
We will withhold the comment of the former administration. The next item under Old Business, is there movement on that, that's a previously tabled motion on the proposed job description for an ordinance?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed IWWC slash zoning enforcement official job description, as contained in the draft dated February 8, 2012. Second.
Okay, we have been provided with the job description. Any comments or discussion?
I would note, and this is a bit picky Ewing, but I would note that the job description does not explicitly state that this enforcement official must attend the zoning meetings. However, it does say that the list of responsibility is only indicative of the responsibilities. So, and the reason I bring that up is because we tried a couple of ways, it just didn't seem to be able to make it into that word zoning meeting. But that will be part of the responsibilities of this official.
When asked.
When asked.
It says, the, uh, the job description says that the person who fulfills the position takes direction administratively from the mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so if the mayor says you will go to the meeting, does that suffice?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess it...
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because it lists a number of commissions, and it, it excludes the zoning commission. And we did not want there to be any confusion that this person will be attending the zoning commission when directed to by the mayor.
He's afraid zoning is going to be the exception.
I'm afraid zoning is going to be not right.
Well, when we merge the two, it'd be different. Bottom line is, bottom line is, the individual will be a town employee, will work for the mayor, and the mayor can look them in the eye and say, "Do this."
Yes.
They have to do it, unless it's clearly contrary.
Just get us a point in looking at it. I would agree with you. In fact, I would, I would appreciate if you made a motion. I don't know why it's worded like that, where it says, "Attend landing zoning ordinance", unless you might want that commission being, it says here, I might, I might.
I thought there was a revision where we put that in.
I thought we did, but...
We made that revision at least twice.
Okay. Is it, did you put that in?
Yeah.
Did you add something?
Yeah.
Okay. It's resolved.
I think what happened was, we put it in, and then the administrator of Human Resources made some more revisions, and I think that was just in the burden of that. So, we'll put that back.
And again, I'll make, I'll make the point again, that in, in the description of items that says these are only indicative, it's not a comprehensive list.
I know I did say that in there, but then he did another, he did a third revision, and I think, like I said, in the burden, we just got left off.
Sure. If I, if I may, I, I've been having continuous conversations with the current chairman of zoning about this, and I have indicated that when, it's recently, it's today, that when in fact we hire somebody, I've tended to meet with the chairman of zoning and the individual to give very specific instructions, or, I'm sorry, suggestions, well...
Either one.
Requirements to one, suggestions to the other, about how this individual is used. Yes, the person should probably be in zoning meetings. If that's the case, I'm going to weigh in on the zoning meetings, because I, I don't want to have a situation where we just wear our personnel in, in these things. So, putting that in is certainly appropriate. Could I just ask, were there any other changes? That was the only changes to add that word. Okay. The reason I ask is, yeah, right there. Yes, okay, only because I want to make sure that we haven't closed out that, so I can take what you have and put it onto the website tomorrow. I don't, excuse me, I couldn't.
Well, I, I just, I have a, I have a question, which is sort of administrative and technology in nature. I mean, the agenda tonight has a, an item, I'm looking at it, it says zoning wetlands, and it has a date of 2/8/12. Is, is that the date of the, the draft job description? Because that date does not appear on the electronic copy that, that shows up when I click on the link.
That was the latest version, when Mr. Skydaw said it to me, that was the date.
I guess the question really is, will it be clear to the public who reviews our minutes sometime in the future, what, what document we actually approved tonight?
Right, because if you look at the document, the revision date on it is January 31, 2012.
That was dropped on...
Okay. Sorry, with my noise, scroll. Okay, so, I, what I'd like to do then, is if this is, we're, we're certain that with that one change, that this document, which actually says revision 131, 2012, down the bottom, that the 13112 document is correct, except it needs that one change, that we have a friendly amendment to your motion, and we approve the job description as dated 13112, as amended tonight, to add zoning description in, this would be the, let me count the number of paragraphs from where it says...
Third paragraph qualification profile.
Good, thank you. Third paragraph under qualifications profile to add, not actually, this, on third paragraph, oh, I'm sorry, so we count down from essential job functions, one, two, three, four, five...
Ten landing.
Five.
Ten zoning.
Yeah, six, seven, it's the eighth paragraph under essential functions to add zoning commission. Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
Roxanne, did we, did we, so we are amending the eighth paragraph under essential job, essential functions to add zoning commission?
It's actually the ninth.
Okay, I've been told that I can't count, and it's really nine, not eight.
Okay, can I just ask a question?
You certainly may.
The date at the bottom, the 3/14/2012, is that's really the only date that should matter?
Well...
That's the date that you...
That's the document, right. I didn't quite follow it.
I, I just wanted administrative record, so that somebody can go find the piece of paper and say this is...
Mr. Monahan, Michael looking for it.
This is, this is what the Council approved.
I mean, since the motion said February 8th, documents in January 31st, where's the document?
Does anybody care in the future that that was a draft early, or...
No, but, you know, in, in the old days, there was a piece of paper, and you could say, "Ah, well, this was the, here's the piece of paper", and, and you could trace the words and the minutes to something that, that adequately described the document, so someone could say, "Yes, this was the document." You know, with, sort of in electronics, and you don't really have that anymore.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Having struggled through all of that, I'd like to put something out for consideration. The mayor is the director of land use, am I correct?
Correct.
At this time. If in future years, we changed the land use organization and had a director of land use, this should not say the mayor.
Correct.
This should say the director of land use, who cover the current and the possible future.
Is there another friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Yes, to friendly amendments. Yes, to both friendly amendments.
So, with the second paragraph, it was facing revision of the director of land use.
Yes. I would agree with that. And I'm very happy that it's that person, and it hasn't been, or less.
And it would also be up in the second paragraph under essential job function, same thing, place there with the director of land use. Same thing in any place else that air being found, even talking about.
Okay, so, the motion is to approve the job description, which is now dated 3/14/2012, with the amendments discussed tonight. Okay, Roxanne, would you call it?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Drogowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelborn?
Aye.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, administration committee.
Okay, I'd like to set, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing date for March 28, 2012, at 6:45 PM, to be held in the council chambers, Annex Building, to receive comments and recommendations regarding the proposed ordinance creating a water pollution control authority for the town of Ledger, as contained in the draft dated March 8, 2012.
Second.
I'm feeling this is going to be the first one.
Okay, are there any objections standing by to be shot?
No, I, it's really not much discussion on it, because it's just saying public care. Right, just a question, how many people are we putting in the new...
The draft ordinance is five.
I didn't mean it's not five in the whole place.
Okay. No other discussion, Roxanne, call it.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Drogowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelborn?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution supporting the Central Corridor Rail Coalition and the Palmer Rail Coalition efforts to expand passenger rail service in New England, as contained in the draft dated March 6, 2012.
Second.
Okay, do you care to discuss it, for those who are listening?
Absolutely. This particular, this particular motion simply supports the proposed Central Corridor Rail Passenger. Obviously, it does not come through Ledger. It will be a service that the residents of Ledger can make use of. We don't see it obviously coming and having a train stop right here in town or anything like that. And so what we're doing is lending our support to this proposed corridor.
My understanding is there's a group that's actually run out of the town of Palmer, Massachusetts?
Yes.
That is trying to reinvigorate their town in part by reinvigorating rail service in general in the area, and a rail line that they would like to have extended all the way from Vermont down to New London, and it would run right through Palmer. And so what they are doing is, they have actually, they actually put pen and paper and came up with this resolution, and sent it to us and said, would you support it? So...
The rail lines, all the stuff, I mean, there's all pretty one and up to here at the town.
Brown Road.
Brown Road, this is right now, it's from...
Obviously, they're looking for government funding, probably federal funding, you know, to support subsidizing some sort of passenger rail service that would run on the line that we already have here, that does only commercial rail service.
Yeah, and also, the rail line that they're proposing to use is one of the market side of the... But it's still, that is the town, if we have passenger service.
You could go to New London, and get on a train, and go to somewhere.
Yes, as someone who rides the train quite frequently, referred over planes, a lot of kids, a lot of college kids, take the train, and a lot of retired families would be served by this. I talked to a kid this week, goes to school in Vermont, and if they don't drive, they drive to New Haven, get on a train there, and then go north. Most kids drive, so this is good for a lot of you.
You should do as John Leder did, and hollow out a tree, and go up the Connecticut River. Okay, actually, can't be on there, can't go up. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Next, administration.
I'll make a motion to approve the library assistant job description as contained in the draft dated 2/9/2012.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, is there any discussion? I only have a technical question. When I click on the link, my thing comes up, and everything is lined out. Does anybody know why?
Do you have any back end notes?
It doesn't look like what's in the, was it admin? Admin, 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 I believe, so it's a different...
Well, we have the old one, but the old one was tight, and some things were scratched, and said this is changing, and I think this one that we have is correct, other than the fact that it, for some reason, it shows up on my computer screen with lines through it. I don't know why.
Nobody wants to read it.
I don't, but I...
That was, he all wanted to show you what was speaking out, and it was...
The problem is, is...
Yeah, everything is lined.
Everything is lined out. The only thing that's not lined out is the first sentence, and sentence that gives the provision for...
If the first line is the job description...
No, I...
I know that when it happened, there was some that was like a Word document that showed the revisions, and had the revision history turned on, and then we had to get up with major. This has everything lined out.
Everything is lined out.
It's very strange, because it's the same, it's the same import for both the generals.
Okay, wait.
Admin approved it, correct?
Yes, we did.
And you approved it without lines through it?
Yes.
So, ready to vote.
Okay, so we are voting on whatever was approved by admin.
Correct.
Well, I'm comfortable with that. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Item four, administration committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amended highway superintendent job description as contained in the draft dated March 6, 2012.
Second.
Any discussion here?
I threw in the word amended, we did add one small amendment in admin. When we read through the requirements of the job, and then we looked at the education and, you know, other typical requirements for the person that they would hire, it didn't seem like those requirements matched up with the job description, and so we added the amendment that says we would prefer a two-year civil engineering degree or something similar. That's not the exact wording, but...
The exact wording, or, right now, we're reading graduation, high school, vocational school, or equivalent, and we added on the end of that, that two-year associate's degree in civil engineering were equivalent to his desire.
Yes.
Okay.
We felt like that would be more in line with the requirements of the job.
Also, we did discuss this with Steve.
Yes.
Happened to be working.
I have a question for this, I'm the mayor. I know that the present individual in this job incurs overtime daily.
I don't know if it's daily, but he does, he is one of the individuals that does get paid for overtime.
Well, he gets paid for overtime, and I understand that he opens and closes the garage, which requires him to get overtime to do that. Is that still occurring in this new job?
Again, there will be a meeting when we hire the new individual, with myself and his supervisor, we, we will be redefining the way business is performed.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's easier with a, when you start fresh.
Thank you, that was the answer, I was looking for.
But I would like to just, I also have a concern, and I certainly have nothing against civil engineers, but, and again, these are all suggestive suggestions, preferences, whatever, and we're going to hire the appropriate person. You should be aware that in some of the bargaining units, there are actually payments made based on degrees, and that's worked in there, so it's not significant amounts of money. And again, we're going to hire the appropriate person, if they happen to have a two-year degree, that's fine. You know, this, I don't expect this person to be doing engineering work as such, and you could argue that any associate's degree in engineering or technical field, for instance, you know, a person with a degree in computer science or technology might be very helpful in that area, so it's fine to have it in there, if it's preferred, I don't think that's going to significantly affect the aspect of this.
It was my concern, because I thought, in reading the job description, that was an awful lot of responsibility we were putting on somebody with just a high school education, and so I thought we should write a whole script.
No, we worded it the way we did, so that if the right person comes along, who only has a high school education, and years of experience, and capable, and a very capable person, you know, he's still qualified, and he can still hire, but we wanted to use those words to maybe vet the candidates just a bit.
I mean, I would certainly agree, in this day and age, that you would expect someone with at least a senior associate's degree, but to single out, single out hearing, you know, as a preference...
Well, we said or equivalent.
That, once you get, you have another, you would deal with another individual, who's not necessarily... Actually, I came up with the word before you gave that rule.
All right. I can't under those words.
They're not in either one.
Okay.
We added them in.
Well, yeah, I was about to clarify, now we're done. So, the motion was made as read on our agenda to approve the draft dated March 6, but the draft has been revised, as of the administration committee's meeting of March 14.
So, it's the draft, so we are, this is again, a friendly amendment to the motion that was
made, to have the motion read the draft as dated March 14. Roxanne, was that clear? The motion has been amended, friendly amended, for the draft as dated March 14.
Right, got that.
Okay. Okay, no other discussion, Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
The motion passes. Number five, administration.
Motion to approve the proposed assistant finance director job description as contained in the draft dated March 8, 2012.
Second. You'll change that, will you?
No.
Yeah, we'll let that one off.
Okay.
It's only a few lines.
Okay, is there any discussion? Yes.
Is this the job that currently, is this the person that currently works part-time for WPCA?
Well, it's supposed to be, but there's language in here that says director of finance can have them supervise anyone that they so choose to, and that's supposed to be the cover, helping with the WPCA.
Along that line, I don't know, did I discuss that with the council sounds, or was it with Marshall?
I think it was with Marshall.
With Marshall.
That's what I said.
And that was the general agreement, that, again, that person would do whatever, you know. The finance director has a very large, you know, we often think in terms of the finance department, the finance director has a very large department with other areas, and I could see very much that that person could be asked to be involved in, and I would expect them to learn the business in every one of those areas. And, you know, the WPCA, and, you know, in an indirect way, the WPCA's have worked, and it does fall under the finance director, so, but there again, I think we would be talking when that person is hired, and giving them some very specific direction, as to their involvement in those other departments.
Okay, any other amendments, questions, discussion? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, motion passes. Item six, administration.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Rebecca Grabner, Democrat, 42 Eagle Ridge Drive, Galesbury, to the permanent municipal building committee, as a board of education representative, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Pettaplace.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Former town councillor, Graver, eminently qualified. Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Item seven, administration.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Beaver, Republican, of One Birch Street Ledger, to the Ledger Town Center Committee as the Board of Education's representative, filling a vacancy left by Mr.?
Cunkamore.
Cunkamore.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Beaver is currently serving, he's already been at the first meeting.
He's been at the town center meeting.
Sorry.
I guess he's happy to be gone, so let's give him his appointment.
Yes, we could call him an eager.
Roxanne.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
With apologies, yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Item eight.
Items eight, nine, and ten, we were unable to fit into our schedule this evening.
Okay, so those...
We'll just carry forward.
Carry forward, I'm sorry. Well, do we, I mean, do we want to, we can still make the motion if these are non-controversial, if you want to consider them in admin, and we would defer to the, I think we would defer to the admin committee, but...
Do you mind just going to the floor of council?
No one has an issue with that?
Well, yeah, the first one is, I'll, I mean, it's the motion to appoint FX Williams to, of eight, Public of Eight, Hyde Park, Galesbury, to the Commission for Senior Citizens for a two-year term ending December 9, 2013, filling the vacancy left by Mr. Skarp.
We already thought he was there.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, your former, former town councilman, who is regularly attending the senior commission meetings anyway, so I think that would be non-controversial. Any other discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, and then, I move to appoint Ms. Maureen Inman, unaffiliated 944 Long Cove Road, Galesbury, to the Commission for Senior Citizens for a two-year term ending December 12, 2012, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Waters.
Second.
The good thing we're doing these motions, because it's three people, they probably don't have a forum anymore.
Okay, I don't, I admit I don't know this, I don't want anybody else to, she did come to the admin meeting earlier, couldn't refuse herself. And I assume she left a favorable impression?
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, she did.
Okay, that's all I need. Roxanne, any other discussion? I'm sorry, was there other discussion? Okay, through.
Well, again, just let me make the point, nothing against any of these people, obviously, we just, we did not have time to get to them on our agenda.
I understand, I think it's just a, it's just a thing that, you know, we send things regularly through committee, but they don't actually, you know, it's not against the rules to bring them directly to the council that they've not had time to go to.
And they sell the songs out anyway.
Okay, now, I'm clearly losing awareness. Roxanne, call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I'm not sure that's ever an issue, though. I think former council.
Well, my mayor's supposed to become a Democrat.
I'll check with him.
No other discussion, call the roll.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, item 11, finance.
I'd make a motion to appropriate $4,900 from account 1-450-021 to 0122, dispatch for the purpose of purchase of Everbridge Soft Version for Masco Communication. In addition, authorize account 1-450-021-0122, dispatch to be overspent by up to $4,900.
Second.
That's a little secret, Sam.
Great.
Is there discussion?
She just said it all, goodie.
We had the presentation at the last town council. Let's hear it.
We should explain to those, well, I told them that the dispatch has a system in place to contact people for an emergency. So dispatch can auto-dial every resident in town, if they have the phone number, for an emergency, but it can't be used for non-emergencies. So the schools have been using a similar system to reach parents about early school calls, you know, everything is going on in schools, and the town doesn't have the same capability. This will give the town the capability to notify all the residents for things like winter storm clearing. Had we had it during Hurricane Irene, we could have sent notices about where to get water, et cetera, et cetera.
Can we be so specific to just do, I have to tell the people that the road is going to get done?
Yes, and I'll make the, I'll make the case, or the point, that this is an opt-in system.
Yes.
So we need to get the word out, get your email address, your cellphone, your home phone, people need to opt into this in order to be notified.
How do you opt in?
Yeah, that's my question.
We'll probably put something on the town website. Right now, there's a link to CT Alerts, which is a state system you can opt into. There's no such system for later, there will be with this, and I think what we would probably do is put a link to the website so people could opt in and get that information.
So town website. So we start with the list of the school district houses, that's probably the majority of the town. People have to opt in. Counselor Davis?
Well, I was just going to say, the same way we put out the word about the garbage bins, we can get a good portion of people just through social media, through the newspapers, through lots of different places. So the goal is just, you know, the goal is to get as many people.
Should we refer this to community services to formally consider the issue of how to maximize opt-in, or actually at least maximize the communication?
That's a good idea.
I thought, sure, that on this particular system, we were told they could, they could input the white pages.
They can't.
Only if you wanted your cellphone or email. So let's, let's not mislead people, you know. They should be able to get, I would say, 90% of the town loaded to this, because in, in those phone numbers is your address, which then allows them to do the area. So this is not.
I think you can do both. I mean, I think if the town wanted to call everybody, they could, by loading the white pages. Or then they say you have the option of making an opt-in system.
There are many people who don't have landlines, so they would certainly need to opt in.
Yes.
But.
If you want email alerts.
If you want email alerts or text alerts, those are opt-in kind of.
90%, at least, of the people in this town have landlines that are in the white pages. I mean, is there any reason we wouldn't do that?
I think we could figure that out.
Okay, all right.
So.
It's a long time to see.
If you have the database, you enter it in yourselves if you want. Okay. So the point is that since that council's in favor of this motion before us, which is whether or not we're going to spend money, $4,900 to have the system, and the community services committee is going to report back if any action is necessary beyond buying it in order to maximize the effectiveness. Okay, no other discussion, Roxanne, call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, item 14, finance.
I'd make a motion to acknowledge department head transfers from the month of February 2012 totaling $50,220.
Okay, is there any discussion?
The only, only transfers of note that we can discuss were, three were from emergency generator repairs from Town Hall Annex Building, police station, emergency service building, which was taken out, the exit. Funds were in the salt and sand winter, since the mayor's done such a wonderful job of controlling the weather this winter, so the funds are available.
Good job, Mr. Mayor. Okay, no other discussion, any questions for finance? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, item 13, finance.
Motion to authorize account 1-450-003-0104, dispatch overtime to be overspent by $10,000 minus FEMA funds of $2,000 for a total over expenditure of up to $8,000. In addition, authorize account 1-450-002-0103, dispatch part-time to be overspent by up to $19,350.
Okay, please tell us the story behind this.
Essentially, what this does, it looks at the balance, what is Ben spending year-to-date and then looks out to the end of the year, and this basically balances the account through the end of the fiscal year. There have been challenges with the weekend and evening shifts, part-time dispatchers. This was an issue that was discussed during the first budget meeting this past Thursday. There had been, there is a plan in the next fiscal year to deal with this issue in a more cost-effective way and to better manage the standpoint. The current fiscal year will have, the biggest challenge being the fact that the dispatchers aren't running through Friday regular schedule, and so they're juggling the tide of shifts and part-time staff that need to be paid.
The Town Hall employees, the contract says it's money to Friday, so that locks the dispatchers, regular dispatchers. They've had trouble getting part-timers to work shifts, because the weekend shifts are all open for part-timers, and they've had trouble getting them. They just hired, I think they said, three or four new ones that are actually picking up a lot of shifts, so they feel that they're going to get it under control. Whenever they don't have any part-timers, they have to fill the shifts with overtime, and it ends up really spiking that overtime.
Counselor Song?
I hear that, but I remember this discussion in years past, and we tried to solve it by cutting the budget and saying no overtime or less overtime, and now we're transferring and we're in effect spending the money anyway.
Well, the overtime budget was cut in last year's budget, yes, dramatically, and clearly they were not able to meet the budget.
So, so what I'm hearing is that we have three, four new people, but what if those three or four new people decide they don't want overtime too after a while?
Well, they don't get overtime.
I'm sorry, what if they don't want shifts?
That's, that can become a problem.
Yeah.
But for right now, they're taking the shifts. That's, that's been the issue all along with dispatches, that they get these people and then they go and get a full-time job somewhere dispatching, and they leave.
Yeah.
We train them well.
There was a discussion during the budget meeting that I believe they hired somebody that was going to work Wednesday through Sunday.
Yeah.
There was a new hire that was going to be on shift Wednesday through Sunday by September 4th, so that alleviated part of the challenge of allegiance.
So are we forced to hire part-time people to work weekends? Because it says here that by contract, they only work regular hours.
Right.
So does that contract say that a full-time dispatcher only works those hours and you can't hire a full-time?
They hired previously, yes.
Yes.
So could we hire more, or would work?
I'll give you two things. One is obviously anybody can be hired now, who I also said, to work Monday through Sunday, Wednesday through Sunday, and we hope in budget negotiations to get some relief from the Monday through Friday schedule.
You mean contract?
Contract.
What did I say?
I said budget negotiations.
That's the tattoo.
Okay, is there other discussion? Okay, Roxanne.
Only discussion I was going to make is, we're now getting these items before they over spend them, where in the past, we got them after the fact. So at least now we're aware of it, we're discussing it, and it seems kind of crazy to approve an over expenditure, but at least now we're aware that they're going to over spend.
So I will preface my vote as saying it will be reluctant. Yes, Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Oh, you're doing it perfectly.
Okay, the motion passes. Item 14.
Motion to authorize account 1-314-1111, Old Gale 3, school maintenance to be overspent by $800 to school maintenance at 4 Gale 3 School.
Second.
This is two classrooms that are used for a new tenant. The mayor, the mayor system is Bancroft, and it's a budget of about $500 to $600. The Finance Committee spent $800 to cover expenditures to build the rooms, et cetera.
Yes, going to pay them.
Okay, any other discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, item 16.
Motion to authorize the mayor of Market Town Home property located at 1888 Center Grattan Road, led.
Okay, and that property is half an acre, is that correct?
Yes, half an acre parcel.
And it was acquired.
I'm sorry. It was a half acre, one acre.
Two acres.
Two acres.
Two acres, correct.
It was acquired to, that.
It was a portfolio.
Okay, and it's, it's undeveloped, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion, questions? Okay, Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, item 16.
Motion to authorize the mayor of Market Town Home property located at 1888 Center Grattan Road, led.
Okay, and that property is half an acre, is that correct?
Yes, half an acre parcel.
And it was acquired.
I'm sorry. It was a half acre, one acre.
Two acres.
Two acres.
Two acres, correct.
It was acquired to, that.
It was a portfolio.
Okay, and it's, it's undeveloped, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion, questions? Okay, Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.